Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, September 24th, 2025, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Mass General Law allows for remote participation at public meetings through June 30th, 2027. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. School committee members, when I call your name, please stay here for the record. Emily Hansen?
Here.
Zach Verden?
Here.
Jamie Hench?
Here.
Kate Bean?
Here.
Adam Rosenblum? Oh, did we lose Adam then?
Yes.
Adam Rosenblum, can you unmute? Are you good? Yes, you can hear us?
Can you hear us?
I'm guessing no. All right, why don't we jump ahead to the pledge and then we'll check back in after that. Maybe this connection will be better. All right, Adam, we'll try one more time. Can you hear us all right?
Looks like we're still muted.
There you go. No, we heard you this time. Can you hear us?
It was us.
Okay, you can hear us now. Perfect. We were muted. Thank you. Sorry. All right, we are going to head into correspondence. Emily?
Email titled "Unfortunate Events" dated August 27th, 2025, sent by Jeffrey Klotz. Email titled "Due Diligence" dated September 9th, 2025, sent by Jeffrey Klotz. Email titled "Follow-Up to Parent Meeting" dated September 11th, 2025, sent by Link. Email titled "Glenbrook Idea" dated September 11th, 2025, sent by Link. Email titled "Question About Sporting Fields" dated September 11th, 2025, sent by Link. Email titled "Quality in School Distance, Please Review" dated September 8th, 2025, sent by Kurt Friedman. Email titled "Size and Proximity Effects of Primary Schools on Surrounding House Values, Please Review" dated September 7th, 2025, sent by Kurt Friedman. Email titled "Question Wolf Swamp Elementary School" dated September 19th, 2025, sent by Dorothy Jones.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes. Do we have a possible motion about our September 8th meeting minutes?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the September 8th, 2025 school committee meeting as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Emily? Yes. Zach?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
And yes for me as well. Thank you. All right, that brings us to public speak. We have some folks here in the room with us and ready to dive in. We will begin with people who are in the room. Some quick reminders, open with your name and your either affiliation with schools or address, and you've got about three minutes.
My name is Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge Road, Long Meadow, Mass. I'm a resident of Long Meadow. Good evening, Long Meadow School Committee. I attended grades K through 12, including Glenbrook, as did my two sons. I greatly appreciate the fine, multi-generational Long Meadow education curriculum and have always supported the public schools. In early July, I had a telephone conversation with our superintendent explaining my involvement with the Save Our Middle Schools Ballot Question Committee. My concerns for the combined middle school include, but are not limited to, a much downsized school building size, limited auditorium seating, 60% less than our present seating capacity, limited resources, only a single sports field, and only a downsized, single indoor gym. Reduce resources equals reduced opportunities. A limited additional student enrollment capacity. Traffic E or F level of service for surrounding roadways and intersections. Unwanted seven-foot earthen berms obscuring abutter backyards. Reduced property values. Reduced walkability and biking. 1.4 to 2.3 added miles of travel to the proposed middle school. There are no sidewalks on Shaker Road. Since the use of Shaker Road can reduce travel distance by three quarters of a mile, students may likely choose Shaker Road with no sidewalks and compromise their safety. And most of all, the loss of Glenbrook as a neighborhood school. The superintendent informed me that in a perfect world, he too would support the renovation of both Williams and Glenbrook. My response, since we will never have a perfect world, we must always strive to do the right thing. The consolidated middle school has many disqualifying features that would logically better support the renovation of both Williams and Glenbrook to provide the greatest possible quality of education for our students and protect the financial interests of homeowners. Many residents may not be able to afford even the average incremental $1,235 first-year tax expense. If Glenbrook closes, the collective property devaluation for the Glenbrook District may likely exceed $50 million. And what about the financial impact of the possible affordable housing units on the abutters in the Glenbrook District if the land is utilized for affordable housing? We should never compromise our established 60-year community educational standards for convenience or harm the financial interests of our neighbors. Might does not make right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight, Mr. Friedman. Did you also have a comment?
Oh, no, no. Thank you.
Just here. Okay. Then we will turn our attention, that is, all the folks in the room. We'll turn our attention to people online. If there's anyone online who would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand and/or turn on your camera now so we can see that you would like to speak. I'm not seeing anything from folks online. We do not have any hands raised nor cameras on. So we're going to go ahead and move forward to our business with guests. School committee announcements and recognitions. I am filling in for Michaela Fitzgerald, our chair this evening, and she sent me a note to read for her school committee chair report. Reminder, take it out to vote in the special town election for the new middle school. Early in-person voting continues for two more days through Thursday at Greenwood Center at 231 Maple Road. You can also vote in person on Tuesday, September 30th, at the Community House. Voting hours at Greenwood this week include tomorrow from 9:00 to 3:30 p.m. There is no vote, early in-person voting, from Friday, September 26th through Monday, September 29th. The voting hours on September 30th at the Community House are from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Make your voice heard. Our town's vitality depends on it. Any other committee announcements or recognitions? All right, seeing none, we'll head into reports. Superintendent Report?
A few items. I want to mention again that Beth Nelson, Director of Curriculum, has initiated a Science and Social Studies review, and I think it was a question at a recent meeting whether or not that was a K-8 or a K-12 undertaking. It is a K-12 undertaking, so I just wanted to clarify that. We have a big professional development day scheduled on October 3rd, so our directors here in the central office are working collaboratively to put together a program for all staff, both licensed professionals and support staff as well. And in the world of people services, Full Day Preschool is off and running, and it's a great success. Tom and I have been in touch with the director of our preschool and still grateful to the support that the school committee provided to make that happen. The Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow has a day at Shaker Bowl in the evening of the 28th of September. It's a meet and greet for families if they'd like to attend. And additionally, Nilda Irisari, our Director of Student and Family Support, reports that we have the DA's office will be running online safety programming for students at our elementary schools in the weeks ahead. So thanks to Nilda for arranging that. Thanks to DA's office for working on that. We also are proceeding with our independent investigation of the very serious personnel matter that has been our concern, and we have given the investigator full and unfettered access to all the information he needs, and we await that report. I don't have a timeline for you on that yet, but really, as long as it takes, basically, to get us the information that we need and ultimately to share it with the community. Nothing further on my end.
All right, and questions related to this?
So I guess I just heard what you said was the timeline for that investigation is not preset at all. It's just when it's completed.
Yeah, it's, we've given the investigator just full access, full and direct access to all the reports, emails, documents that he has requested, and so rather than putting sort of a finite or artificial end date on it, we felt like it was best just to let him tell us when he's exhausted the investigation and he's prepared to write that up and return it back to the community.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Other questions? All right, other reports. Any additional reports? LPVAC, Kate or Emily?
We had a meeting last week. I think there is a primary concern, especially in Ludlow, with shortages of drivers for transportation. And it's sort of, I think, in their district has really sort of come to a head. No resolution at this point. They are looking to hire. They did, they are down a bus, if not more than one bus, due to the fire that happened at one of their stations. But it's a slightly contentious issue at this point, whether Ludlow will continue using them for transportation or not. I think that was the main issue at the meeting.
Yeah, that was the main issue. We had a joint meeting. My group usually only meets three times a year. We came in, we had joint meetings, we had a vote on approving a loan refinance, but yeah, the main issue was the lack of bus drivers and the number of routes sort of compounding, and especially Ludlow being impacted. So they are looking at potentially going a different route and doing their own transportation contracts with a different company to help mitigate it instead of using the LPVAC buses.
Okay. Thank you. We should update. All right, SEAL, we don't have a specific update for, but can you share one more time what's the date for the?
September 28th, Shaker Bowl Meet and Greet for members of the community who want to connect with SEAL, which does a great job of advocating for special education services for students in Long Meadow Public Schools. So Shaker Bowl on 28th.
Perfect. Thank you. And energy and sustainability, that's up to you, Emily.
So the committee met on Thursday, September 11th, and we were joined by several guests, really to discuss the middle school building project. Since it passed that first vote and is moving forward, the committee wanted to understand how energy and sustainability could be more involved with the build, and also specifically want to touch on solar and natural versus artificial turf. Armon Ray, the Chair of the Middle School Building Project, said that working groups are going to be spun up over the next few weeks and that he would connect with the Chair of Energy and Sustainability about adding someone from that group to a working group as the project sort of begins the next steps around the fine details of the build. The committee also wanted to better understand why artificial turf was selected. There's a lot of factors in the decision, and so they're going to try to get a turf expert to meet with energy and sustainability so that they can have all their questions answered of why they settled on artificial turf, including the type of artificial turf materials that we can consider installing. I have no idea. There's tons of different kinds of artificial turf that you can install. The committee also discussed car idling awareness with Superintendent O'Shea and some options for sharing information with parents and caregivers, including flyers that could be passed out and portable signs that might be moved around to different schools as rotating signs might make them stand out more. And then we spent a significant portion of the meeting talking about drafting a climate action plan for Long Meadow over the next 12 to 15 months. This would set standards and goals for our town, which would definitely include our schools. As that starts to take shape, I'll work with the ENS Committee to ensure that there's solid collaboration with school committee wherever the plan touches on items that would impact our schools so that we can be in lockstep on those pieces. And our next meeting is October 9th.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. Next up is our student representative report, Ms. Danica Shea.
Hi. So last Friday, we had the Lancer Way. So a bunch of clubs got a lot of new participants. A couple hundred students attended the Lancer Way. I was there. It was a great turnout. I was there for Key Club, and we definitely got a lot more new members from that. It was mostly freshmen signing up for new clubs, getting involved, which was great. And then anyone who went to the Lancer Way got a free ticket to the first home football game, which we also won, which was great. And then tomorrow is going to be the class elections for the class of 2029, so I'm sure all the speeches will be amazing and everyone will do great. And then I know a few sports teams are having games tonight. Field hockey is having a game right now, and I hope that that goes well for them.
Great, thank you. Best of luck to the school student government candidates tomorrow. Any questions for Ms. Shea? All right, we are headed into subcommittee reports. Curriculum, Eval, and Finance do not have reports, but Policy Sub does. Do we have a new chair for Policy Sub?
Dr. Rosenblum is the Chair of the Policy Subcommittee.
Perfect.
If you, Adam, I can do that, or you're welcome to, however you want to handle it.
You know, I don't think I could say that you guys are using, so I'm trying to differ, of course.
All right. There were three items that were discussed by the Policy Subcommittee on Monday. One was an item that doesn't require any action by the school committee and didn't require any action by Policy Sub, and that is how to define competency for students who graduate from Long Meadow High School. So Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is requiring districts to formally define a competency determination. That has to be done by December 31st. So we just had a sort of general discussion on that topic with Policy Sub on Monday. No action was needed, no action was taken. There were two other items that the Policy Subcommittee did take action on and are worthy of your consideration tonight. The first relates to some handbook language in response to the Supreme Court case of Mahmud versus Taylor. You may recall, back in June, the Supreme Court had ruled that districts needed to be responsive to any religious objections that parents or caregivers might have to curriculum. And so the Mass Association of School Committees has suggested some language for the committee to consider. It's in a memo that's in your packet. I can, am I going to pull it up on the screen? Or it's short, I can read it?
Sure.
Sure. So the handbook language that is being suggested by the Mass Association of School Committee and was also recommended by your Policy Subcommittee is simply that, consistent with Massachusetts regulations of Long Meadow Public Schools, through its curriculum materials encourages respect for the human and civil rights of all individuals regardless of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national orientation. In accordance with district guidelines, families may request information from the building principal on available accommodations related to curriculum content. And so the feeling of MAS C was that if we would include that in our handbooks, in school committees vote on handbooks, if we were to include that in our handbook, that that would fulfill our response to the Mahmud versus Taylor decision, and it would signal to families that they can seek available accommodations, particularly those relating to their religious orientation. So we can pause on that one, and then we can come back to the third item for Policy Sub.
So this would be a change to handbook or a change to school committee policy?
Great question. This would live in the K-8 handbook and in the 912 handbook, so it would not need to live in your policy manual, although I would say language like this exists throughout your policy manual. In fact, I listed some of the policy references that line up with the language that I just read. So the recommendation was to include it in handbooks, which really, by extension, are school committee policy because school committees vote on the 912 handbook, and we also vote on the K-8 handbook as well. Certainly no harm, and if you wanted this at the policy level and include it in your policy manual, I could sort of find a, work with our attorney to find a landing spot for it in your policy manual, but the recommendation from the MAS C was that it could live in student handbooks.
Okay. And if it's going into student handbooks, is that a vote that we would take or a vote that, or a policy that goes out for public comment? It's not the second one, if I'm recalling correctly?
Not the second one. It would not have to go out for public comment. It would, it could be a vote this evening to include it in our handbooks, and our handbooks are posted electronically, so we could just update our handbooks. So that's for your consideration. Certainly open to any questions you might have, and if it made sense to the committee to make a motion to support the inclusion of that in the handbook, we can answer any questions you have on that as well.
All right, questions and/or thoughts from folks? Can you walk us through the next one?
Sure. So the next one is, I'd say this is largely almost a bureaucratic thing. So this relates to ensuring that we are making students aware of career and technical education opportunities. And so DESI is requiring that by October 31st, districts have a policy that ensures that we have a career tech partner, which we do. Our career tech partner is the LPVAC. There's a number of shops that kids can participate in at the LPVAC. But number one, it ensures that we have a C-Tech partner, and then there's also, it also needs to establish the various ways that we will support awareness and access to these programs. And so this policy would commit us to running tours for our eighth graders, which we already do, making families aware of the application process, which we already do, ensuring that career tech representatives are invited to our open houses or our parent orientation events, and they already are. So there's a lot that we're already engaged in. I'd say that mostly this codifies a lot of the practices that are already in place. The nuance might be that it's requiring that these orientation activities occur by, I believe it's October 15th of each year. This policy also articulates some of the career planning that students in middle school and high school have access to. So for your, that's the second item that came out of Policy Sub. Both the earlier language that I read and this policy had the recommendation of, or reported out of Policy Sub with a recommendation.
All right, questions or thoughts about the middle school pathways exploration and/or language that would potentially be added to the handbook related to that?
In this case, the middle school pathway language, DESI is recommending that it be a school committee policy, so this one would, this one would reside in your, in your policy manual. It would go out for first reading, second reading, and I think at your meeting on the 28th, you could vote it or not.
October 28th.
October 28th, yeah.
Okay. All right. We don't take a vote to send them up to public?
Correct. It's just no action.
All right. Do you have a question? Yes.
It says on the second page that students don't assume the cost of the trips. Where, how, do we budget for that, or where does that come from?
LPVAC would have to pay for it.
Okay.
And that's in DESI regulations.
Okay.
Yeah. If you wanted, we could make that more explicit in this policy, that the cost is to be borne by the LPVAC, but I figured since it's your policy, it's hard to impose.
Yeah, I mean, mainly I was just trying to understand if there was a cost implication to us pivoting to this, but if it's LPVAC that's footing the bill then.
In fact, it'll save us a few dollars because they'll be, they'll be required to pay for the bus from now on. Previously, in past years, we've paid for the bus, I believe, looking for Mr. Masan. Yeah. So.
All right, great. Thank you.
Potentially could entertain a motion on the, if it made sense to the committee on the handbook language. For us to include that in the handbook, it would require a vote of the school committee.
Okay.
Or you could wait until your next meeting.
So I'll leave this up if somebody would like to. I might prefer to table to the next one so we can have council review to ensure that we're in line with Massachusetts regulations, which I'm guessing we are, because the language seems to be taken largely from Massachusetts General Law 603, but just.
This, this language actually, I should have clarified that. It came from MAS C, but also the, I'm going to mess up the acronym, but the Joint Council for School Attorneys, which our attorney, our firm was directly involved with. So I had talked to our attorney, Sarah Spatafor, about this, and she said absolutely this received. They had direct input into this, and they were supportive of this language.
Okay. So this language is echoing Massachusetts state law about encourage and respect for, that is the language, if I'm recalling correctly, that is literally pulling from that language. Encourage disrespect for the human and civil rights of all individuals regardless of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, or sexual orientation. And then in accordance with district guidelines, does that refer back to our policy on KEC and IHAM?
And even AC, I'd say, yeah. Now, I'd say this is not as time-sensitive as some of the other items, so if you felt like this needed, you know, if you had questions of me individually that you want to, you know, talk about offline or even talk about now, this one doesn't require any action tonight if you felt like it had some additional questions or wanted to think about it.
Okay. All right, I'm going to move us forward then, seeing no hands going up for a moment. Let's head into new business. Mr. Masan, I'm guessing that's you. We have some building use requests.
Yes, good evening. You have four building use requests in your packet tonight. The first is from the Center School PTO requesting use of the gym at Center School for their 21st Annual Halloween Hustle 5K on October 25th, 6:00 a.m. to noon. The second request is from the Raise of Hope for use of the Blueberry School Parking Lot on Sunday, October 19th, from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Wolf Swamp PTO has requested use of the cafeteria and parking lot for their annual Turkey Trot 5K on Saturday, November 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. And the last one is also a request from the Wolf Swamp PTO for use of the Wolf Swamp Parking Lot Field Playground for the Big Bad Wolf Trunk or Treat on Sunday, October 19th, with a rain date of October 26th, from 10:00 to 4:00, and the event is running from noon to 3:00. Finance Sub did not have a chance to review these, to recommend them, so a motion would just be for people.
All right. We might have a little discrepancy. Oh, no, I think the notes are saying the dates they were submitted, correct? Yes.
Yes, not the dates.
Okay. Not the dates of the, gotcha. All right, perfect. So we have a possible motion if someone would like to make that?
Yes. I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee.
Is that actually the right?
No, I would strike that part.
We'll just go right to.
The School Committee approved.
Thank you. I move that the school committee approve the consent agenda for the September 24th, 2025, school committee as presented. There is no discussion of items on a consent agenda. If a committee member would like one or more items on the consent agenda discussed, the committee would have to vote to remove the items from the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so reminder again that there is no discussion of items specifically on a consent agenda, so I'll read through each one really quickly, and if anybody would like to have one pulled for separate discussion, please let me know. The first is Raise of Hope. The second is the Wolf Swamp PTO for the annual Turkey Trot. The next is the Wolf Swamp PTO for the Big Bad Wolf Trunk or Treat. And the next is Center School PTO for the Halloween Hustle. All right, seeing no requests to pull those out, we'll vote on the motion at hand for the consent agenda. Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
And yes for me as well. Thank you. All right, that brings us to school committee goals. I'm going to recommend, so we only had a few folks who were able to respond to school committee goals. My recommendation is that we table this until our next meeting, but with a caveat. I'm going to ask Dr. Shea to send out copies of the ones that have already been received so that everyone can review that, and maybe we can also attach to that copies of our current goals from. current goals from last year.
Yep.
Just to give people a little bit of framework, in case they need a little help getting started. And if everyone can respond to that in the next week or so, there's a link to a Google form in your email, and make some suggestions, and the next time we're here, we'll talk. We also have, and you just told me the date, now I forget, at our next meeting, October 14th.
14th.
Thank you. October 14th, a tentative date for our annual school committee administrator retreat. That will be October 14th at 5:00 p.m., so that'll be an opportunity for us to also hear from administrators and talk a bit together before we actually vote on our own goals, which I feel like will help inform that process a little bit better. So a couple of reasons there to push this out. If anyone has any questions about goals and/or needs any help thinking things through, you can obviously reach out to Dr. Shea. You're welcome to reach out to me or Michaela as well. All right. Any questions and/or thoughts about goals? No question?
No. Can you repeat the date of the October 14th meeting?
Yes. October 14th at 5:00 p.m.
At 5:00 p.m.
Yep. All right. That brings us next to a memorandum of agreement with Unit A related to the elementary workday. I'm guessing you're tackling this one?
Sure. So we have an opportunity to, this is an MOA with Unit A. Unit A represents, includes licensed educators in the Long Meadow Education Association. As we had agreed in the contract that was settled in the spring, to work toward an MOA that would define the end of the elementary workday. And so in your packet is a copy of the language that we had developed with the LEA, and essentially it says that the elementary workday concludes once professional responsibilities have been fulfilled, including but not limited to instructional duties, exigent family communication, student supervision and support, and scheduled meetings, provided that all students and visitors under the educator's direct responsibility have either safely left campus or are under appropriate supervision. Exemptions or adjustments can be made only through prior administrative approval. So rather than defining the end of the elementary day for our educators at a specific time, this defines the day in terms, the end of the day in terms of their professional responsibilities. I think it's a reflection of the professionalism that we receive from our elementary educators. It's a, it's a reflection of the professionalism that we want to extend to them likewise. So this has our recommendation, and I believe the LEA is supportive of the language that is before you this evening.
So this is also something we've talked about recently when we last discussed contract negotiations, but if you have any questions or thoughts, and/or possible motions, then I'm happy to read those.
I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement with the Long Meadow Education Association, Unit A, dated September 8th, 2025, as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Kate?
Yes.
Sorry, I tried to give you a second too. And yes for me as well. All right. Thank you. That moves us to an update on the middle school building project.
Not much to update. We're eagerly anticipating the September 30th vote. Actually, appreciative that the Select Board had extended early voting to the community, so to give some flexibility to voters. I think, you know, as, as people start to understand the costs of the project, we had invited Dave Fontaine Jr., the CEO of Fontaine, to have a conversation with us. We recorded that in the LCTP studios. We posted it up to the middle school project page, encourage anyone with questions about the costs of the project or the cost containment strategies that Fontaine has successfully used on prior projects, to take a look at that video. I think it will be very helpful, a lot of new information that perhaps folks have not yet heard, and it introduces our construction management partner, Fontaine. So excited to find out the results of the vote. It's been a long road.
Yes. All right. Wonderful. Any questions about anything related to middle school building? All right. If folks haven't been out to vote yet, get out there tomorrow, and/or we will see you on Tuesday. We're excited. All right. That brings us to our final motion of the evening. We're headed into executive session, not to reconvene, into open session. We'll entertain a motion.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, with purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for collective bargaining session with Unit B, D, E, F, and non-union personnel, and seven, approval of minutes, and not to reconvene into open session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll head into a vote. Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
And yes for me as well. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening, everyone. Thank you.